Good evening. Welcome to the public hearing for the 2024 sewer rate proposed increase. Before I open the floor, I would like to take this time to thank a couple of people. I'd like to thank the Water and Sewer Committee, the Water and Sewer Personnel, including the Intern Superintendent and Becky Sims at RCAP. I approached the Water and Sewer Committee in 2022 requesting a rate increase and presented my reasons on why I would like to have seen that. To the committee's credit, they did not just ask how much we had wanted, but actually wanted to know the billing, how it worked, and how to best implement an increase if they were to give it in that effort. RCAP Solutions was approached by the committee and together over several months data was collected, the needs were assessed, and a final customer comparison sewer rate scenarios was formulated by RCAP Solutions with the assistance of the Water and Sewer Personnel and information from the committee. Becky Sims presented to this board and the public comparisons and the rate scenarios that were developed and how they were developed. Prior to this scenario approved by the board, the rates were based on units, which is an engineering formula that had full and half units and at best could be arbitrary. You could have a house with one and a half units of charge and have two people living in it and have another house that's being charged one and a half units and have six people living in it. One obviously would contribute more to the collection of the sewer than the other. The water usage base currently proposed has been found not to be arbitrary. Although never a happy discussion, the rates have not been addressed by the town since 2009. I find that to be a disservice to the customers of the district and a lack of concern of the fiduciary responsibilities of the board. So keeping that in mind on what this board has presented. At this point, I will open up the floor to public comment here in the room first and then onto Zoom. Anybody on the floor? Yes, Marla.
What is the proposed rate? And I'm sorry if Paul and I haven't been able to do this a lot of these meetings, but the water bill definitely affected our business. And it's very concerning that, you know, you want to increase the sewer rates as well. They don't go hand in hand at that first time.
That is correct.
Yep. So, for example, when we moved here in 2011, we had, 2011, we opened the business in 2012. Our water bill is $800 every three months. It is now $3,600. We cannot sustain a restaurant with a water bill that's $3,600 every three months. I don't know how we can also sustain another increase for the store.
We just, we wanted to comment here what was going to happen with the money.
Okay, that, yeah, that's very fair. To start a special district such as the water district or a sewer district cannot make money. The laws of New York State say that it has to pay the bills and operate the systems, but it's not there, you can't charge an absorbent rate in order to run and start putting tons of money away without having set up the proper channels in order to do some capital projects, say. In regards to the water rates, and this was one of the reasons why I had approached the committee to change the sewer rates. We've got a seven and a half million dollar project that we're currently attempting to get started for the water districts, mostly for the aged infrastructure that's in it. One of the things that came back to the committee and the town board was that with our new rates that we apparently proposed, we fall in the lower percentage of New York State rates. And they're not sure that New York State will want to lend us money because based on our rates, they're not sure we can pay it back. So it's, there's a whole scenario, and I think either Dave or Jane would be able to explain it a little better for what it is. But as far as what is the money going to be used for, there is, there is a budget online as far as, you know, what the personnel is, what the upgrades that they're looking to do. I believe one of the things you've got immediately is a $50,000 immediate repairs for meters over the flow valves was one of them. And Dave, if you would introduce yourself to the
Hi, my name is Dave Buns. I'm the Intern Superintendent for the Water and Sewer Department. A little background, I've been 35 years in the business. Worked at the Town of Thompson for 30 of them as a foreman for the Water and Sewer Department. I run several other water systems in the area, small ones, restaurants, developments. So I've been very active in the water and waste.
Yes, Steve.
You know, whether it be written or verbal, I have commitment to my tenants.
Can you speak up, Steve?
Whether it was written or verbal, I have commitments to my tenants that I am obligated to maintain the rent that I told them that I was gonna charge them. And then all of a sudden, I get these water bills that really, if anybody would look at it that had commercial property and also resided in Narrowsburg, they would look at it and say that residentially, you didn't hit them with anything. Commercially, you're banging us. And it's hard to pass the cost though. We're in a terrible economy right now. I can't go to somebody and say, look, my water bill used to be 900, now it's 3,600. You gotta, you know, ante up on this. They don't want to hear that. So I don't really understand why this didn't go across the board evenly to everybody. I don't know why you singled us out and you didn't hit the homeowner with a bigger increase. That to me is terribly unfair. I mean, I look at my water bill on Delaware Drive, it's peanuts. You know, it hasn't gone up much at all. And then I look at what I have on Main Street, and sometimes I say I want to do business on the other side of the river. You know, it's too much here. So it's very unfair. I even had Francis write a letter, you know, requesting, what's the justification for this?
Did you look and compare what your tax bill was prior to the new increase in the water rates? And the reason that I asked that is prior to the new water rates, what the town had done was they left the water rates alone, but when they needed to raise more money, they put an ad valorem tax on everyone. Who pays more money in taxes, commercial or residential? That's why I'm saying, look at that. So everybody's rate stayed the same, but they hit it in the ad valorem tax. What I requested and got the board to approve was no ad valorem tax. Everything is based on the rates. When we get into the seven and a half million dollar project, and now we're gonna have to start bonding money, that's where the ad valorem tax is gonna come in. Then you're gonna see more of the residential homeowners and some of the more affluent homes are gonna have a substantial increase.
Well, then doesn't it make more sense on just going on straight gallon usage? So that the heavy users pay more and then the, I mean, you could be a house and you could be using a lot of water, but you're not paying the same as I would commercially. It just, to me, it just seems like there's all of these different charts that you have as how you want to charge people and everything else. And at the end of the day, it's based on gallons in and gallons out.
I think that's something that the Water and Sewer Committee will do. We've only had this billing now. This will be our second year coming into it.
But I mean, I have 20 large amounts on my ass. You know, everything is based on, there's no sewer charges. They're charging you in the, you know, in your water bill. But it's basically on gallon consumption and the other multiplier is how big your service is coming in. For some reason, they charge more for a larger service. But it's all based on gallons.
And this is, the sewer rates are gonna be based on gallons. We're getting away from the units, the one unit, the unit and a half, the two units.
But I mean, you know, this is, this is, you know, the way the water is and then the way this is, and there's nothing straightforward here. There's a different formula for everybody.
No, the formula is the same. I think the breakdown was to show what?
But if I use, if I use 1,000 gallons at my house and I use 1,000 gallons on Main Street commercially, it's a different rate.
For the water department, yes. And then for the sewer, I think we're at a straight rate with sewer for everybody.
Sewer is no commercial, but it's a
Why is it more commercial than it is residential?
It's, it's not in the sewer rates. The sewer rates are just gonna be based on the water through the meter. Okay?
He's asking about the water rate, so why is it?
And we can, we can pick up with the water and sewer. We're here.
We're sewer.
We're here for sewer tonight, but I mean, it's a valid point. It's something that, you know, I think.
You're saying water is water is water, so.
So consumption, especially now that you're saying that that's what you're applying to the sewer.
Oh, I remember the phrase. Well, anyway, go ahead.
But I I think that's something that the committee can look at as far as the water rates go.
Why did it take so long? Like you said, in 2009 was last time you got an increase.
I can't speak to anything before 2020.
You know?
I came back in 2020. I raised the rates last in 2009. I left in 2009.
It's a lot easier to adopt when there's
Absolutely, small. And I'm not here to pick on other boards or other supervisors, but this is what happens when you don't take your fiduciary responsibility and make sure that your special districts are being run properly. Because our special districts are small. There's not a lot of people in them. We're not as small as Jeffersonville, you know, and we're not as large as Thompson. But I think our district, our district is probably smaller than all of each of Thompson's special districts.
So do you have a deficit as a result of it?
No, we don't have a deficit, but what has happened over the last three years now is the reserve fund for the sewer has been used to pay the bills. And there's zero reserve fund in the water when it came in.
So there's red lights going on.
I call them big red beacons. You know, and it's, it's one of the things when you've got these small districts with so few people in them, it impacts. I mean, you've only got 300 services, you know, 350 services, that's, that's not a lot to make up for a large budget.
What is being changed that the money is being borrowed for?
No money's being borrowed right now for the sewer department. No money has been borrowed for the water department, for the water project. Water tower should supposedly be in, in the spring of this coming year.
Yeah, yeah.
Where was that going?
Right at the same site where the old water tower was.
It'll be a cement water tower instead of what we have now, which is recommended for this area.
And that water tower was out of compliance when I left in 2009.
It was built in the 40s. It was supposed to be replaced in the 70s. So it's way overdue.
What does out of compliance mean? What was?
Uh, it used to be that you could paint the inside of that water tower with a, a not, with a food grade paint. They changed that, that you couldn't do it. Then you had to, I believe, wax them on the inside. When I left, you could wax them. Now you can't even wax them. They just didn't want it. But the scary thing is, we've got this project. We're waiting for the health department to approve before, anything that with the water department has to be approved by the health department before we can start. But that was, that was identified as the first thing to address with the water department. And right now, seeing what's going on with the water department, this is the reason to start getting ready for the sewer department. I believe it came to age
24 years ago? No, it was built in the 80s. They last 20 years. That would put 2000. It should have been replaced and with 20 years past, it's
I think the filters stay in bed. The last time that they were totally replaced before Dave came in was in 2006. Michael?
We have a grid here with five different options. Where does the board lean? Because for us to try and understand what we might be getting whacked with, we need to know where this might be going.
Option five, I believe.
We went with five because it, the base rate paid higher, so therefore the budget would be paid, would be closer to, we'd be closer to meeting budget just with base rate and then the rest, and it's a lower usage rate after that. In kind of water rates.
To put it in some perspective, one of these, the sewer is gonna have 114 as a base rate for residential. I don't have
For everybody?
For the
Oh, it was for everybody.
114. So when you look at column five here, it'll go 125 as a base rate and then it'll be $8.88 per 1,000 gallons used. So in terms of what my bill will probably be in March, probably down from, will be closer to like 170, 175 dollars. So it's going from 114, just like, you know, that's the, that's the, those are the facts. You're going from 114 to basically about 175 for this residential bill, at least. That's just to give some perspective.
So it's $60 roughly on top of the 250 or 240 or whatever, so it takes you to 300?
Again, a ballpark, that's a ballpark. My 240 or 300.
You know, and again, I, I pay like everybody else in the district. It used to be about 125, 140 or, it's gotten to 300. That's the reality that I, as a resident, I'm facing. And I, you know, just to give everyone.
My name is Roy Johnson. I live on the Blatts. I have a pool. If I choose to fill my pool with water, I'm gonna be charged for the septic that's not being used. Is there an exception for that?
I don't know that there's a built-in exception for
It's not there is. But that was talked about because you're not the only pool in the district.
Okay.
And how we can go about, you know, it's gotta go to the committee and come up with a plan for that.
Might be cheaper for me to buy the water. You know what I'm saying? A tank of water. I mean, I've done it before.
AquaDuck usually is one of the companies.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sarah?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the customer comparison sewer rate at the C and you mentioned that the board was going with option five. I know that option two also had an outline around it. Does that mean that you had considered those two and decided to go with five? And if so, what was the difference between the two?
They, they considered all five.
Right, but there are only two that are actually like sort of separated.
I mean, they're down to option two and option five. Maybe that's why that's
And I believe that option five, one of the reasons was it allowed better budgeting of
Better budget control, yeah, for the sewer.
Better budget control. It means that we have a set amount that we know is going to come in and it's not so fluctuating on the usage of it.
In both options, incentivize conservating, pay less, use less, you know, because it's, you're being charged eight dollars, you know, almost nine dollars per 1,000 gallons used. And if you use fewer gallons, you'll
What's, in, in the way the system runs, the septic system, is most of it fixed? And, I mean, depending on how much sewage you're treating, is it pretty much fixed?
No.
It's variable.
There's variables and it, um, again, the outdated system, we have a lot of infiltration and trying to locate that infiltration has been very hard because of there's not enough manholes in the system. We have over six miles of sewer line and we only have 24 manholes.
Whoa.
Yeah, I've got to run from Second Avenue all the way to Delaware Drive 1,400 feet. And I have no manholes in between to flush or do anything with. So it's very hard to control a system that you don't have access to.
There's a lot of variables.
There's a lot of.
Okay.
Jill, Jill, do you still have a question?
Oh, thanks. I think I do. First of all, the papers that everyone has there is, is that online?
Yeah.
Option one to five?
Yes.
Cool. Where, I have my computer. Where can I find that?
She's looking it up for you now, Jill.
Okay, thanks. And then I did have a question, but now like maybe a naive question. But I think I'm gonna ask it anyway. So I've always wondered about like the cost to the town of the number of buildings that are not in the commercial district, which I kind of assume is the water district. Is that true? Is the water district that we talk about, is that like Main Street?
The water district actually goes all the way up to Hunts' Corners, or yes, Hunts' Corners and 52 and 97. It goes over to Fort Delaware. And it also includes the triangle.
Okay.
Seven on the triangle.
I think she means the commercial. Do you want to know who, who's considered?
Yeah, sorry. I'll just ask a question. I've always wondered about the cost to the town of un, in buildings that are not being used for commercial purposes that are, were originally commercial, it seems like. And does this bring that up again? That sort of, as Steve was saying, and as you were saying, there's just so few entities paying into this that the division, you know, makes it, just doing the math, makes it these big sums per entity. Is, is that related to these unused storefronts?
Unused storefronts will still be charged the base, base rate.
Okay.
If they're not, if they don't have water flowing through the meter, then they would just be at the base rate with no water usage.
But if they, if they were using water, if they were operating entities, would that lower the cost for others because there's more people paying into, you know, using the system and therefore paying into the system?
Yeah, I mean, it would. The more use that you've got, you know, expanding a district, bringing more people into the district can be beneficial to it, yes.
Yeah, so it just makes me think about that question because before I've asked that, it's like, well, they pay taxes, so that's a naive question. Like, you know, we can't make them do anything. But it just seems that is a detriment to the town and the cost that businesses who are trying to, you know, help this community thrive, like they're bearing it disproportionately. So I guess it's just an observation and yeah. And Crystal, wherever you can help me find the sheet, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. You can just put it in the chat if that's helpful, so I'm not disruptive.
Jill, I texted it to you.
Okay, thank you.
More on Zoom?
Nobody has that handy?
Okay, anybody else on the floor at all?
So what do we do with option? You treat it and then it gets filled and then it goes into the river?
Yes. Your, your endpoint's the river.
Okay, and that's what, on the end of Delaware Drive?
No, it's, you know, where the well won.
Not really, no.
Okay, if you're going down Delaware Drive, there's a brick building on the right-hand side. As you make that weird little loop.
Okay.
Goes right alongside that building out into the river.
Okay.
Right across from, if you're at the sewer plant, go through the river, straight out to the river.
Got it.
So I guess logistically, you're going to vote on this at the next town board meeting or is it still
No.
still under consideration for?
It's still, they'll take the public comment. They've got a meeting Thursday morning. And take anything that garnered here and move forward with.
So we're looking at January, starting the new year with?
Yes, one of these.
Just so everybody's aware, if, when this goes through, right now, October's bill you got, you paid for your sewer ahead of time. The flat rate, you paid 114. So January's bill will not have a sewer charge on it. Because now it's going based off of your usage, your bill would be from January to March 31st. April's bill will have that on it, just like your water bill does now. You pay what you use, not forward. So January's bill will not have a sewer on it.
But your April bill will be the
Will be the first of the new sewer bill.
So sewer and water is all now, whatever gets collected goes into the same fund, correct?
Two different districts. Right, yeah, the water district and the sewer district are both separate.
But when money is collected, it just goes into a general fund?
No, no. Directly into either the sewer department or the water department.
But it's on the same bill, correct?
They could put on the same bill, but the monies have to be separated by law. Yeah, yeah, it's very clear about that.
And just, it's also something I was impressed with when I first got on the board and had a training is a lot of towns get in trouble because they have a small, you know, the, the water sewer district is, is a third of the town or whatever. You can't bill tax. You can't have the rest of the town that isn't, doesn't benefit from the water and sewer paying for it in any way. And towns get in trouble when they, when they're
homing of the funds of the special districts and the general fund. Keeping that in mind, and can you correct me if I'm wrong, the town is responsible for the sewer and water special districts. So if they go under, then it's the town responsibility to pay for it.
Well, yeah, I mean, they can't, they can't go under, but ultimately the cost has, always winds up going back to the people in the dead that are in the district that benefit from the system. In the long run, in the long run, the general taxpayer who does not own property in the district does not bear the cost of the district. How is the system sized for expansion of the town? Is it maxed out? Does it have more room?
There, there is room. There's room at the end of Oak, I believe.
There is room. The problem is that you're supposed to be H.
Got it.
Do you have another question online?
Yes.
Irish.
So I would appreciate if can you hear me? Okay, yes. I would appreciate it if you could clarify how the water is released into the river. Somehow I missed that and I wanted to know, is it purified? Is it processed? How does that water that's released? What is that water that's released?
Do you have other defer that? The knowledge of it, I got.
Clear than the river, I would. Yes, it is. It's cleaner than the river and it's disinfectant. Now, what happens with the sewer comes down the pipes from the village or from the hamlet and gets collected, gets pumped up to a dosing chamber at the head of the plant, sewer plant. From there, it's distributed onto four different beds, one bed at a time, alternating. It goes through a sand filter, gets recollected, then it goes through a chlorine contact where chlorine tablets have contact with the water. It gets purified. where chlorine tablets have contact with the water. It gets purified, then it goes out, our outflow. And then it heads towards the river going by well one alongside the building there. And it's out to the middle of the river, not the edge of the river. It goes all the way to the middle of the river. We do testing on it every day. We do certified lab testing every month. And then we have yearly testing that the state requires us to do. And we've never had a failure. We've been meeting our requirements through our speedies permit.
Dave, can you explain to them what the sewer beds do? Like I I understand what it does, but I think a lot of people think they're gonna be floating down the river and see something pass their canoe.
No, what the sewer, the sand beds do, as water is dumped on them in four different locations for each bread, it's spread out over fine sand. The fine sand collects any of the particles that are still in suspension. The water goes through uh, a little small gravel bed to a larger gravel bed, then it's collected under the underground pipes and then taken to the chlorine contact. And then distributed to the river.
Then the beds are raked.
The beds, when I first got involved with Narrowsburg, they used to mow them with a John Deere tractor. Well, sand beds are not supposed to have sand on them. So over the years, we've removed all the grass, put fresh sand down, and they're raked every day now. There's a gentleman out, one of the guys that work the sewer and water, is out there raking, making sure that there's no buildup, no ponding of the the water and the solids can flow through the sand freely. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much for that clarifying piece of education. It makes it much easier to understand and I I appreciate your clarifying it, no pun intended.
She's gonna unmute, hold on, she gotta unmute, yeah.
Okay, uh, good evening, folks. I, a question for Dave. Is is there a market for this gray water? Is this something that this gray water can be sold?
No.
For it whatsoever?
No, and it's getting even tighter because of forever chemicals. You've heard in the news about PFAS, um, which is fire departments have gotten drinking water and stuff. Well, coming down the line in the next year, the state is gonna have requirements for PFAS for our sewer systems. Which is gonna be a little costly, and that's part of why the rate increase is to cover this cost coming down.
Can you explain to them what? That?
They use the, the fire departments use it for uh, fire retardant. It's also in clothing, anything that's waterproof is uh, has PFAS in it. And the limit in drinking water right now is ten parts per trillion. If you can imagine Olympic-sized swimming pool, take ten grains of sugar, throw that in your pool, you're at your max limit. They're gonna make it finer for sewer water, for your ethylene. It's gonna be four milligrams per trillion. It's gonna be very hard to get rid of, and the only way to get rid of it right now is activated carbon filters. The state's putting a lot of requirements and limitations on water and sewer. Since I got in the business thirty years ago, you could do a sewer system with just settleable solids, little chlorine and down, now you're tested for nitrates, uh, phosphates, ammonia, uh, total nitrogen. The test has gotten ridiculous of what the state's requiring us to do, and it's all comes back on a burden on the users. Anybody that wants to have a tour of the water or sewer system, just call down to the sewer plant, we'll make a schedule, I'll gladly take people on so they understand where their money's going to. It's very hard to ask you for more money when all you know is you can turn the faucet on and it goes down the drain.
It actually is very informative how it's done.
For every, for everyone that's online on Zoom, if you go to the chat section, you'll see where there's a link to the uh, today's notice. And that has the chart that they're looking at.
Sure.
Yeah. You mentioned how our filtering devices go into lack of. How you clean the filters?
They're saying you rake off the sludge off the top of the sand, and then you add fresh sand to it.
It's like physically a filter, raising your farmer. It's the bacteria growing on the sand grains. They remove all the rootings.
And what about the carbon filters that you were talking about?
Well, they would be cleaned by backwash and removal. You'd have to have it pumped out and taken to a hazardous waste thing. This is all new to people in the sewer system and the sewer industry. Because the government just decided this year that they're gonna hit us with it. So everybody's in a scramble what to do with it. And used to be you could take your solids that you raked off, ship them out, and they used to put them on landfills for cover for landfills. Well, now with the PFAS requirements, a landfill's not gonna wanna take it cuz that's gonna make their numbers too high. They don't know what they're gonna do. It it.
Love Canal.
Yeah.
Love Canal you're talking about.
Exactly. But why not go after the corporations and the chemical companies that are making this stuff? Stop it from coming into the country cuz they, you cannot manufacture it in the United States. But your clothes made elsewhere in Canada and Mexico and stuff, they're allowed to come into this country.
Anyone else on the Zoom or anyone else off the floor?
And I was just, you had a conversation with Scott Burney. I'm sorry, you had a conversation with Scott Burney? I did, relevant to this conversation. Um, Scott Burney used to be the superintendent of water and sewer here. Um, he left in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven, has since gone to the village of Goshen, where he is the superintendent of public works. And uh, my conversation with him was, we're getting ready, this is what we did with our water rates, and he knew about it. He's, he's been in contact with Dave and, uh, you know, and this is what we're gonna do with our sewer rates. And it was disheartening because he actually laughed at me and said, he goes, you have no idea how low your rates are and what we charge. And it and it's hard because we got businesses trying to survive, we got people trying to survive. And the last ten years has not been the time. And now we are in an uh, an economy that is not productive for what we wanna do. And we're trying to do right by the people in the district. And I got other people say, yeah, you guys are nuts, you're you're still too low. It's like, you you can't take blood from the stone. We understand that. But unfortunately, we're on the other side and we're hearing New York State tell us that, okay, you did a good job, you raised your rates, but you're still in the lower third, you're in this lower seventy percent of the people. We're not sure you're gonna get money. You know, and those are the people we want the money from cuz those are the low interest rates, those are the long-term bonds that we can get. And uh, it it's not it's not a fun position to be in. Um, it certainly isn't a popular position to be in. And I don't think that people realize the amount of work that the the committee and the and the personnel do to to get to this point. Um, it's, it's not an easy thing to do, to tell people that, yep, we just hit you here and now we're gonna hit you there. And we still have an aging system.
You know, I understand your position and I know it's not easy. But at the end of the day, I also take offense by what that guy from Goshen said. You know, Main Street in Goshen has a hell of a lot more activity than Main Street in Narrowsburg though. You know, it's a little bit easier as a commercial, you know, business in Goshen will absorb fire rate with more population. You know, we have a population problem here. If there's not activity in the town, there's nothing going on in the town.
And that's why we're, our rates are still in the lower percentile, percentile of of
I understand that.
Yeah.
It's not like it was two years ago when everybody was coming up here to the coast, you know.
And we don't need to turn back to the eighties of what was here. And everybody's wondering what was here. Exactly, nothing was here. You know, we we, I, the board, the committee understands that. But we have to do something with what our districts are to make them survive. Now, what you're saying about the water, I mean, I think that's something the committee needs to look at, like, you know. But I believe when we started with the water rates, we said that it was going to be a year or two to see what it is and what kind of bugs we have to get out of them.
Well, it was a little bit of an eye-opener, the increase that came my way. Certainly, you hear an increase coming down the pipe and you don't, you know, nothing gets increased anymore where it's a five percent or a ten percent increase. There's these tremendous increases lately. And it it's just hard as, you know, being on the other side of the fence to adjust to this. You know, the only person that it affects at the end of the day is me. Because I can't, it's difficult to cast these things on to to who I'm dealing. So, you know, it's, I know it's challenging for you, it's also challenging for us too. And I understand that it's the antiquated system which makes it even worse. So and now there's more things that we have to be So, you know, the state puts a lot of demands on us and and uh, at the end of the day, it's gonna affect all of us. So, and uh, whatever.
But I I think you make a good point though, Steve, in that we are largely reactionary to a lot of laws that we have to be compliant with. Uh, I was surprised when I started walking, working with the Water and Sewer Committee to find out how much of that is prescribed and that we have no control over those variables. And they do affect everyone. It's, it's very difficult. And the other thing I wanted to clarify was about Jill's question. When you are in these districts, we have a quota that we have to be able to handle per user in the system. So therefore, we may have to, we have to have the capacity to make more water than is logical that we would ever use. So the buildings that are what I would call fallow or not in use are still responsible. The owner is still responsible for those charges for the capacity that we have to be able to create. So those, those bills are charged and I can't think of a time where they, we say they haven't been paid. So just be aware that those charges are out there and that is part of what the base rate reflects.
Jill, you had a question?
I did, and thank you so much, Greg. I appreciate that clarification. So just to make sure I understand, cuz I'm a little slow. Um, it's like that there's estimated use for those fallow buildings and that is what they're charged?
Uh, not estimated use, expectation of if they were in use, how much we provide.
Right, okay. So so then my point is moot.
Well, it's a good question, but it it.
Thank you, Greg. But but it is moot because it's like, it's, yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, yeah, I I might have missed how to read the chart, I'm sorry, but as a, I'm also a landlord, so I'm a residence, but I'm a landlord of a of a single residence. Um, which row am I looking at for for that?
Five, option five.
Well, that's the column.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the other columns that you're looking at, Jill.
Or the row.
Yeah, are comparisons for different uses. But your use is still in number five, which would be the base rate quarterly of one twenty-five. And then your use per thousand would be the eight eighty-eight. So if you took your last year's water usage for that particular building, you could figure out roughly what your bill would be for the year based on the water usage and the base rate quarterly. So if you, if you used uh, a thousand gallons for the whole year, it would be eight eighty-eight plus uh, four quarters of one twenty-five.
But it's one of those commercial rows, customer type commercial, correct?
No, there is not a commercial rate in the wa- in the sewer district.
The only reason though that they're broken out separately is because there are different quantities used by commercial or residential. So it's broken to reflect the use that might be, but it is the same rate.
Which is, Steve was saying.
Yeah, to answer Jill, I have two houses left. One is not being occupied and one is being occupied and it's the same water.
Because you're, because you're not going over your minimum most likely.
Right, right, but I'm saying, but so in other words, even though the house is not being used and not one drop of water being used, it's still pretty much the same exact bill.
Right, right.
So there is money from empty houses.
Yeah, I was thinking about the commercial, um, but it's all good cuz Greg explained. Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you for all the work of the committee and happy holidays.
You know, and Steve, that that's the thing, the point that you just made about the water kinda goes into the point that I was making in the beginning about the sewer units. Uh, you could have one point five units, that's what the people are being charged, and two people live there.
But I'm not complaining about it.
No, no, but I'm seeing But if you had a water usage by gallon only, like how many gallons for your water, when we're talking your water bill, then you would see a difference in the two different buildings.
Right.
You wouldn't, but you wouldn't have the nine thousand gallon, you know, minimum. It would just be, you're gonna be charged every single gallon or the thousand gallons for this. You know, that kinda, when you said that, it just kinda, to me, brought me back into that unit.
The minimum makes the most sense. Because there's a, there's a court that has to, you know, everybody has to pick up a tab on, but the minimum makes the most sense. It's just how it was divided between residential and commercial. That doesn't make sense. But I understand the minimum.
Mary has her hand up.
Didn't, you put it down. Mary, do you have still a question?
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, thanks for answering the question, um, everybody. But I still have a question, and I'm glad Steve brought that up, is that, you know, I understand that, you know, you're hitting everybody pretty hard. And yes, I know in the eighties, everything was boarded up. And I know that the system is antiquated. Is there any way, and I know that, like, you know, it's usage, like, let's say, for example, I'm just good cuz Anthony's on there or uh, someone else is on there that lives in Florida and they're only up here for three months, let's say four months. And I know that, you know, they have to bear the burden cuz they are in the water district and yes, they are in the sewer district. But let's say they're not using the water. I mean, it, I know we have to bear some of the burden if you are there full-time or not. But, and the same thing with the businesses. Let's say, for instance, you know, we are an eco-tourism town, we need to bring in more people. But let's say like, they go away for like four or five months and they close down for whatever, for the sea, the winter season or the shoulder season or whatever it may be. But yet they're being charged an exorbitant amount of money. Is there any way that something can be done? And the other thing I know, um, Ben, you had said that we have to get to a certain rate to be able to apply for all these bonds or grants or anything like that. Is there any, any documents that shows that we have to get to this point? Is there anything that we can request to look at? I mean, you guys have been very transparent about all this. But you know, I know that being in the water district, you know, it's expensive and, you know, still being on Long Island and working for the city, but I just feel like, oh my God, we're gonna end up, considering we are a very small district, water and sewer, that you're gonna run people out of town. And this is a gorgeous town, there's a lot of people investing money. But the businesses, as well as the homeowners, would love to stay here. And it's not your fault, I'm not putting any blame. It's just an old system. Is there any way we can do this, I say we, that we can do it systematically and in smaller steps? So that we're not just crushing everybody, both homeowners and business. That's all. Thanks so much.
Um, I'll start with the one about the bonding first. Uh, we can get bonding from anywhere. It's just that New York State has got the lower bondings will look at our rates. So it's not like we can't get money from anybody. Um, I, I think unfortunately we've kind of passed the increments tiny step move forward. Uh, I think we missed that in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and nineteen. You know, I, I think that there should have been more attention paid to it.
I think the district is too small.
Not while they charge people. They move real fast.
Well.
From a business standpoint, I think the district is too small. Because if there was five hundred more clients on the, on the system, you can spread out the, you can spread it out there. I think it's, then all of a sudden, if there was ten thousand gallons more a day coming through the, the system. It could handle it with not much more expense. Um, so I think the district is too small for the expense that has to be put on it.
There, there was a time when the Adler subdivision was the opposite of Piggles Lake was in the sewer district. They didn't have any building. They, they had nothing, but they were paying sewer rents on, I think a hundred units over there. Um, and then they eventually pulled out. The thing with that is when you have something like that, that district still has to be able to maintain for an immediate hookup. So if you've got something like the Adler's over there with a hundred units. You just have to be prepared that when they're ready to go, that that system that you have in place is large enough for it. But you know, I think David and I both agree that a bigger system would be much better. You're spreading it out over many, many people. Anything from the board?
This thing is instructive. I mean, I hold up my little blue card. I've always been in the district and that's all I know. But you ought to talk to your neighbors who maintain their own wealth of their own set, you know? What is their cost amortized over the years? And people I've talked to say they would kill for the rates that we pay in the district, not kill, you know.
Yes, Iris.
Who's speaking?
I think I responded.
Yeah, I did. I had a question and um, it was kind of answered, but if it comes back. With the parts that I need, I will raise my hand again. Thanks.
Um, uh. As a member of the committee, I try to read as much as I can about these things and we are not alone in these concerns. New York State is full of water districts and sewer districts that started abruptly the same time ours did. And everyone is having huge infrastructure concern right now. Um, and I will just speak for myself and say, I am proud to be on the board. That is addressing these things that have not been addressed in the past and to move it forward. Um, hopefully in moving it forward, we are ripping a Band-Aid off that will not have to be ripped off again. You know, um, that's, that's my hope and um. In the reading I have done, there are districts that are in worse shape. And it is a crisis for those communities, so.
Ira?
So the question that I wanted to ask was, considering the fact that the fire department cannot hook up hoses to any of the hydrants. How can that problem be taken care of? What is necessary to do to take care of that? Is it because the pipes are so rusted? What, what's the story with that? Because it's a little frightening to realize. And the fire departments have been extraordinary, by the way, in terms of what they do with the pumper trucks and with transporting water and so on. But to have fire hydrants and have them totally unusable doesn't even seem to make sense. What can be done about that, if anything?
That's actually what the uh, twelve point plan is that was put forth for the water infrastructure program. And.
Number two on the list.
Yeah, that followed the water tower as far as uh, replacing mains.
Dave?
Um, also to answer your question, when I first came here in two thousand and seventeen, the loop had one working hydrant. Since now, all six of those hydrants are working, functional. Um, we've also taken three others that are working fine now. There's, I've gone with the fire department and discussed where's isolated or certain areas that they would like to have hydrants work in. And we made sure those are working. The other hydrants are back from the forties. And if I open them, I don't think I'll be able to close them because they were installed without isolation valve. And an isolation valve is from the main street, from the main va, main line to the hydrant, they put no valve in between. Which is another whole issue. Um, there is plans, like they said in the upgrade, to replace all those hydrants and put isolation valves in. So they can be taken out of service and repaired down the future. But when you have to change a hydrant down on the flats. You've got to shut down. From the union all the way down to fix up my land and drain all that water out to repair it. It's quite scary. So me, the fire, the fire department, the water and sewer department have gone around certain hydrants that they needed. We made sure they're available. You still have coverage. The insurance company sends a guy out and it's for the state uh, insurance company. That we maintain certain hydrants that fire department has access to.
Thanks again.
Uh, one other thing, uh.
Really appreciate your knowledge, Dave.
No problem.
Um, it, there's been so much question, so much questioning about the water sit, uh, the water in the sewer public hearing. Just a reminder that when these questions do come up, we do meet every first Monday at eight AM. And the public is welcome to attend. So in the future, if you have questions about this or there's something you want to educate yourself about, please, uh, please feel free to attend those public meetings. And they are in person.
You know.
One last question. The bottom line, what are we gonna, what is this gonna cost? Do you have any answer for that? I mean, I know you have it in this year, but like, okay, so my water bill, let's take, uh, you know, one of the buildings on Main Street. What is my sewer rate gonna go up?
The easiest, I, and I think this makes it easy enough to at least come close with, is you're gonna have your four quarter lease. So that's a flat rate. Take your water usage from the previous year, divided by a thousand, so you know how many thousands it is. Times it by the eight eighty-eight, that would give you a rough idea of what your sewer rate's gonna be. A lot easier than when the water rates came out when you.
Over what percentage are you talking that it went up? Is it twenty-five percent or twenty-two percent? Like where, where did you feel it is?
Um, we just have the system.
I'm sorry?
The current rate.
One fourteen ten.
The last column has, um.
Yeah, that, that's what the uh, the lowest use twenty-five percent residential commercials, um. So this, the difference from the current, from the current bill highest fifty-eight, highest user residential. I mean, that was a thousand dollar difference for the highest use residential. Um, high use commercial would be a difference of a thousand, um, would be two twenty-nine, twenty-four.
I have a copy of my water bill here, but I'm showing it to you.
Do you have a copy of your water bill?
Yeah, but that's on it.
It's on.
Looking at it. I can deal with it. Yeah. Actually, when you learn something.
So somebody used the minimum water, the nine thousand gallons it's, that's given. Over the course of the year, their flat rate would be five hundred and two dollars. And thirty-six thousand gallons of usage would be three hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. So their yearly bill would be eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. As opposed to their flat bill of one fourteen ten. Which is four hundred and fifty-six dollars, uh, four hundred and fifty-six, fifty, so you'd be doubling it. So you're going from four hundred and fifty-six dollars a year to treat your sewer to eight twenty a year to treat your sewer. That would also include uh, the pump outs, which are every other year, every third year.
Every four years.
Every four years. Okay, so. I think you're, yeah, you're just, just underneath the, doubling it a bit of the sewer, so the sewer building. And then that's if somebody used a nine thousand gallon, if you use less than nine thousand, if you used half of that, then you know, you're gonna be. One sixty and five hundred, you'd be six of them. What can be about a hundred and fifty dollar increase for the year.
In the house that's currently not using water buildings like that, I think it's called forty-four dollars a year.
Listen to the long, okay. So at twenty-two Main Street, on page two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars a month. And out of that, the sewer is six hundred and eighty-four dollars. So what would my sewer go up?
What? What is your gallons that you're using of water? That's, that's what we would need to know if you want to come up with a sewer rate.
Was that quarterly or monthly, Steve?
You said, you said monthly, but I think you meant quarterly, right?
Yeah, the bill is quarterly.
Yeah.
Your usage for that period was forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty.
Forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty per quarter?
For that quarter, for my quarter.
That's the water use.
That's gallons?
Yeah, water gallons.
No.
Forty, that's eight Main Street. Yeah, that's. Twenty-two Main Street is where, where is the gallon? Uh, up here on the corner, at Blue Mopps. So if you pay in streets is fifty-eight thousand, or fifty-four thousand, but twenty-two Main Street is one thousand.
So for that unit that used forty-six thousand gallons, you'd be charged eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per thousand. So that's four oh eight, that's your variable, plus one twenty-five, so that is. Five thirty-three forty-eight, that's just to give you an idea, that's what the sewer bill would be for that quarter based on these rates.
That's what? Given with this kind of, you're not touch. My sewer here is six hundred and eighty-four.
Right, cause you, how many units you paying? Where, this is twenty-two?
This is twenty-two Main Street.
And how many apartments do you have in there?
Three.
Three, that no longer, you don't have those units anymore. That's the whole thing about this. The way it was originally set up in unit cost, it's no longer there. Now it's actual usage charge.
But what about the base? The base is only the address or the units?
The base?
The hundred and twenty-five dollars is per unit or per address?
It would be the.
Unit.
Now, Pete's got three units upstairs.
Right, it'd be the one base and then the gallon used.
Right, so it would, it would just be one base.
I bought the building in, in twenty eighteen and it was nine hundred out. Now it's twenty-two hundred out. And so, for the whole, yeah, the whole, okay, so, but the sewer really doesn't change.
Okay, those.
Spread out evenly is what we're actually doing, making it so people that use more water pay more. People that don't use water pay less.
And that was when I had opened up about the arbitrary nature of using units. Which there's right, what you're seeing is the arbitrary of you using units. Now, if in each of those units, you've got more people, because the units usually go by one bath, uh, one bath. So you've got a one bath places, okay? Unit A has got two people in it and you still got a one bath and you got two adults and six kids, so you got eight people. You know who's gonna use a lot more water, but they're each getting charged the same. Now they're not getting charged the same. Now they're getting charged all the.
For my clarification, twenty-two Main Street is just one unit or?
Right now it's three units.
But you're being shocked, right?
You get three bills or just one bill? So it's one unit.
Now it's one unit.
So you're saying.
You'll say it's gonna be fair to everybody in the long run.
Doesn't, this makes sense.
And people, like there are certain locations that get pumped out more than once every four years. They're gonna pay for the extra pump outs.
Oh.
Which is fair to everybody.
Okay, so you're gonna pay by pump outs now?
We always did.
You get one free.
You get one pump out every four years. But if you have an apartment building or an Airbnb that gets abused and you get pumped out in three years. You're, the homeowner's gonna pay for that extra pump out.
And the grinder pump?
We'd like to see those.
I have a.
You know you do.
Yeah.
Yeah, eventually you like to see those taken out.
So then how would you do with it?
How would I do what? How?
Lower than the main, right?
Like to see it go behind the buildings. And grab it out towards Russ Muston and out towards Fifth Avenue, Fifth. That's the way it should have been. Grinder pumps inside a building, I don't know. And we've had this conversation.
Yeah, eight Main Street comes into twenty-two Main Street and it gets, yeah. Nobody seems to be able to figure that out, but I think that's what's going on. I guess we have to die in the water some, but.
Way before my time.
So are there septic on Main Street?
No. Well, yes, there's a septic tank on, going down Main Street. On the left-hand side, there's a septic tank in front of fifteen.
Yep.
At the alleyway there, there's a septic tank there.
Right in the center.
And then the gray water out of there comes down around the front of Main Street and picks up the grinder stations from the buildings on the right side. They get pumped up into the sewer system and it goes down to Fifth Street. from the buildings on the right side that get pumped up into the sewer system and it goes down to Fifth Street.
Not just the left.
It's, I, okay.
You got one more, Eugene?
Dave mentioned, uh, the pump out, one free pump out every four years. I, I think there should be one free turn off of water every four years too. And I say that because my neighbor recently had a, uh, a leak. And, uh, it was causing, you know, he discovered it late, it was costing him a lot of money, uh, in lost water because of the leak. But, you know, to add insult to injury, it cost a hundred dollars for the town to come all out and turn off his water. And I was quite shocked when he said it was a hundred dollars to turn off the water, if that in fact is true. But I would think that you should at least get one free turn off in every four years, uh, in the event that you haven't a problem like that because, you know, harm to, you know, insult to injury. Um, Dave, is it a hundred dollars to turn off the water?
It's fifty dollars to turn off and fifty to turn on.
Yeah.
It's the same day. There's, I don't have the price sheet right in front of me. But the incident you were talking about down on Delaware Drive, the gentleman called, he had water in his yard. So to find out where the water's come, we turned it off. It dried up, so the water is on his side of the curb stop. The town's responsible from the main to the curb stop, from the curb stop to the houses, the homeowners. He wanted the water back on, because I, we asked him if he wanted to repair it, get someone down to repair it, he couldn't at the time, but he wanted water. We turned water back on. Four days later, he was going away. And he didn't want the water running, so we turned it off. He came back, we turned it back on. Then he had someone come repair it, we turned it off, we turned it back on. Six times, we could have charged him because we turned it on, turned it off, when he charged them for two.
Oh, that's a good deal. Okay, I didn't get that part of the story.
I'm not, you're not the only person that's questioned me about the same situation. But we're not out to screw them, but I do have tie-up guys going back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other question to tank. Who's responsible for the tank on a residential property? If it fails, cracks, leaks, who's gotta pick that out?
That's a good question. Um, the information I have from the town is we're responsible from outside the tank. We're responsible for the pump, but from their tank to the main is the home, is our responsibility from the house to the tank is the homeowner's responsibility. So if the tank fails, I don't know who honestly is responsible. I think it's the homeowner. And that's my opinion on it, it is not, because I believe when the district was formed, the town bought the tanks and had them installed, and then they turned them off. The homeowner's responsible for the repair.
So then think back though, it becomes a septic system that you have to
Yeah.
maintain.
Right.
Well, that's a nice surprise.
Yeah. Not much. Right, you put a driveway in, the first highway culvert, ends up being a
The homeowners.
Homeowners, and then
Town responsible after that. This way was the other way around.
Yep.
Came up with the late fee. Ten percent. It's definitely, it was definitely a motivation to pay it.
Well, I think that's what the committee was looking to get.
Yeah, they, they nailed it. They did good.
Well, we have a lot of problems with people not paying their bills or their taxes. On a five percent penalty. Now that it's been raised to ten, we still have quite a bit, but not as much.
That's not the juice that they're gonna.
It's her bill, it's, you know, it's not a rotating the whole cumulative thing, so. I mean, we have people that don't pay their bill until their taxes next year. And I'm running a system with not having its money.
Yeah, I get it.
Anthony has.
Anthony?
One, here we go, real quick, seven and a half million dollar project. You spoke about a, uh, twelve-point program to identify what was gonna be done in that seven and a half million dollar project. Um, where would I find on paper somewhere that said, yeah, here's the twelve points, this is what we plan on doing. Remember, you, you, you very recently mentioned uh, the, the second point was about the hydrants, right? Where would I find that?
We have the Delaware Engineering. We've got it in printed form, I don't know if it's online or not. Um, if not, we can, we can get a electronic copy for it. It's, uh, there were several presentations on it for the board. It's, this is not something that just showed up. This is the stuff that's been in work for, uh, last half years.
Yeah, a couple of years, right?
Three and a half years.
All right, um, yeah, I'd, I'd like to, um, just see that, because that's, uh, probably interesting.
The full, the full project, Anthony, was quoted at, at that time at twelve and a half million dollars. But we, the committee felt that that would be too
Much.
High a price for the district to absorb.
Okay. That's, 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 I mean, things cost money, so seven and a half million, twelve million, whatever it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost. Um, but back to that, the twelve-point program and earlier someone, I think they maybe it was you Ben that mentioned the second point was about those hydrants, right? Did, didn't I hear that earlier?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, so the hydrants, um, this one's okay, that one's not, the one down the block works, the fire hyd, the, the, uh, fire department knows. I- is there some way to, to, um, know which hydrants are working and which ones aren't?
Uh, Dave, you'd be able to, you, you know which ones are the fire captain ones. Uh, would be those.
I can mark them if someone would like.
Nah, Dave, no, not a, not a big deal. I was just wondering, because there's a hydrant in front of my house and I just wanted to know if that one's all right, or they're gonna be drafting from the river in front of my house.
They won't be drafting. They, they have enough hydrants in the district that they can tap into to, to initial attack. None of the hydrants can battle a bra- blaze like Russ Muston. They're gonna hot, they're gonna suck water from everywhere. But a hydrant's in, in the area will be covered by your insurance. I wouldn't do that, not have coverage for you. I, they can hook to a hydrant. I might not be able to shut it down when they're done. But they can hook to a hydrant.
All right.
But the hydrant's part of that. Didn't Delaware Engineering already do a little audit? Yeah, they wanted to replace all of them. Was that part of it? Yeah, so we would know from that, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sure you, I'm sure you've tracked this, but just to be clear, it's not just a matter of which hydrants are working. The system is not a modern design, so the entire system needs these checks and balances and. Yeah, just, just clarify.
Understood, thank you. Thanks.
We have any more? If not, we can close.
I'm hopefully close.
Um, the public hearing? No, we're just closing the public hearing. Thank you for the question.
Thank you all.
Um, ended the work session. The public hearing was my work session, unless somebody's got something that they want to bring up for the meeting coming up.
Ben, I sent you that. Oh, yeah, we had discussed the, that the board should maybe make a little statement about, you know, what we did this year. I, I drafted something for Ben and um, I'll send it to all of you tonight or tomorrow morning and, uh, look it over. I promised to get back to one stuff that I didn't. I was, did a talk for down with the highway and. Yeah, it's, it, it's pretty concise. It's like five hundred words. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do laundry, but.
I thought it was better. I'll send that out.
Oh, yeah.